Um, alright, let's get into it. So, uh, GOP city council member in Alabama. Here it is, folks. GOP city council member in Alabama says the N-word. Watch out, we are going to, uh, you're gonna hear the N-word. I'm just letting you know. Did you tweet it out? No.
I mean, I know I'm black.
Do we have a house in here?
Yeah.
Do we? Hey, do we? Would, would, would she please stand up?
Y'all were seeing this right camera.
Insane. I need to know the context. Not that it's excusable in any context, but still absolutely wild. Just a wild thing that happened. At Tarrant, Alabama city council meeting on Monday, a white councilwoman used a racial slur about black people, causing noticeable shock among meeting attendees. And upsetting one councilwoman with so much, she had to step away from the meeting. According to a report Tuesday, the state focus website Bama Politics Councilman Tommy Bryant, 76, stood up and loudly asked what you heard already. He says about one hour and forty-one minute mark on the Facebook video above. You can also watch it here. I kinda wanna see the fucking-
And as I started speaking, he interrupted. So knowing that I'm gonna get interrupted and not be able to say what I need to say, I usually just keep my mouth shut and don't say anything. So that's the reason I don't say things is because I get interrupted, uh, I'm not respected, and nobody cares about what the law-
Hey, least racist man in Alabama, boys. I say sweet home Alabama, baby. That's what I say. Mom, I'm coming home to you. My man deserves to be respected. That's why he's saying just such respectable things, okay?
Their own thing here in the city of Tarrant.
Okay, I'm just gonna ask you outright.
Let me, let me, uh, Council LeBron, do you mind? So I think part of the, the, um, the discord that you're-
Wait, why is this so fucking quiet? It's kinda weird. Turn up that racism, boys.
receiving from citizens is a direct result of some of the things that your wife is posting on, on Facebook. And let me actually read something that she posted. She says the-
Mr. Mayor, would you, would you leave? Listen, this is between me and Chuck and the citizens. There's nothing at all about what my wife is posting.
But your wife speaks on your behalf.
Would you please leave my wife out of this?
She speaks on your behalf and your wife-
No one speaks on my behalf.
The Tarrant Tattler, this also applies to the mayor and his racist ways of getting rid of all the white city employees so he can replace them with this chosen blacks, his chosen blacks. Some of those hard don't have the qualifications of those who quit because of the mayor or were far bar. The city will suffer. The guys who work with street and sanitation left and there is no one qualified to operate the machines to cut weeds and grass on the sides of the roads that are not citizens' property. That is the reason why people are coming after you.
Mr. Mayor, my wife has not put anything on Facebook in quite a while and-
No, that's not true.
So was that you?
There are people-
That's not true, cause she made a comment about me on the Tarrant Tattler just the other day.
Evidently, evidently, there's a way for someone to do something and put somebody's name on it because she hasn't put anything on Facebook in a while.
Cause I'm today and I've never disrespected you or your wife. And I feel that way because I have a spouse and won't be unto anyone that disrespects Mr. Prepper. And I'm just here to tell-
Watch him, dude. He's about to Kamehameha. You see that? He's charging up. He's charging it up, boys. He's like, hmm.
That's what I'm talking about. This was about me and not my wife and now the city has changed.
Your wife puts herself in politics by posting things on Facebook and she attributes it to you.
Mr. Mayor, not, not, not-
Yo, am I crazy? It's just so easy not to have your wife say racist ass shit, dude. Like, is it not easy? It's literally free. Like, it's one of the few things in the United States of America. Like, there's no such thing as a free lunch, but guess what? There is such a thing as a free experience, okay? And that is just don't be fucking racist. You know what I mean? And you're in Alabama. Like, you could probably fucking, I don't know. Probably legal to silence your wife in Alabama. You know what I'm saying? Not that that would make it acceptable, obviously. But you know what I mean? Like, this is the one instance where he's like, I can't do nothing about my wife. It's like, yeah, because you agree with her. You know what I mean?
My wife, my wife can do what she wants to do. She's a big girl. She can take care of herself. And I'd appreciate it if you, if you wanna talk to me about what I do, you can talk to me about what I do. I'm big enough to take care of myself.
Well, even if I did say on there that you were against LBGQ, she said that in one of those groups.
Yeah.
And she calls us black.
She said the N-word.
N-word. The N-word. Let's get to the N-word.
I mean, I know I'm black.
Uh-oh, uh-oh. His alt, his alt is charged up, boys. Boys, he's, he's powered up, dude. Oh, no. He's like, my favorite subject, the N-word. Oh, no. When you see a dude, when you see a seventy-six-year-old man in Alabama go, my favorite subject, the N-word, you know there is no productive discourse happening after that, okay?
Do we have a house in here?
Oh, God.
Do we? Hey, do we? Would, 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 would she please stand up?
Y'all were seeing this right camera.
That's what Ms. Freeman was called.
That's what the mayor called her. What do y'all think about that? Huh? Y'all like that?
In executive session, it was not any of us.
I wanna read something, Chuck, Chuck, I wanna read, Chuck, I wanna read something else that Nancy Bryant posted. She said-
What is, who attends this? Bro, that thing rolled off his tongue, dude. So easy. It just fucking rolled off his tongue so easy, dude.
We have questioned where he lives. He owns multiple rental houses in Tarrant, but no one knows, but no one we have talked to knows where he lives. The address, the address given him at one point is a rental with a Hispanic family living there. He told my husband he is rich and can live anywhere he wants to. This was after he belittled Tarrant and said only poor people live here. He seems to think being mayor made him god. As for how he got elected-
Okay, this is boring. Uh, his thoughts on Muslims? Oh, hell, yeah. Here's John Tommy Bryant showing his ignorance about Muslims right before spouting the N-word. This man must be removed from office? Oh, yeah. This is the video I was, I saw originally. This is so fun. Okay, let's take a look.
And everybody here says yes, we all agree to that and, and that's great. About embracing everybody. And everybody here says yes, we all agree to that and, and that's great. I don't think you really understand what you were saying, what you were agreeing to. For example, uh, Ms. Beltrane says she is a Muslim. Alright?
What's wrong with the audio? Is the audio really bad? I don't know what it is. Uh, it's not like super bad on my end.
Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize for that. Okay, but now let's say that someone here is a Muslim. Alright, and we embrace the Muslim. If you know anything about the Muslim religion, if you're not Muslim, their religion says they need to kill you.
Wow. This guy, why is he leaking our secret doctrine, dude? What a fucking asshole. He knows. He knows, boys. The gig is up. Shit. I can't believe he knows. Yeah. Well, the racist bit came through loud and clear. Yeah, you guys, you boys, uh, you boys hear that part? Loud and clear, dude? Are you still on mono? I am. I hope you were able to catch that part, dude. Okay? Hope that part came out loud and clear. Oh, here it is. Here. I put it on fucking, uh, I took it off mono. Oh, God, it's so loud now. What the fuck?
Man, I was talking and someone interrupted me. If you can say that, and if you, and if you read the book, if somebody interrupts, you can have police remove him.
Not letting me subscribe on my Twitch Prime? That's weird. I don't know why that happens. Hey, this is better.
Y'all used to do that with Tuck. Remove people.
This is what y'all used to.
Just sleeping, people sleeping at the fucking town hall? Anyway. I love that, dude. Uh, speaking of Alabama, here is a story out of Alabama. There's a doctor in Alabama, which is, uh, you know, congratulations, okay? It's very cool that she was able to overcome being from Alabama and, uh, even become a doctor. Um, but, uh, yeah, apparently, Dr. Brittany Kobe has said on Monday that all but one of her COVID patients in Alabama did not receive the vaccine. The vaccinated patient, she said, which by the way, Alabama has one of the lowest rates of vaccinations in the country. They consider around thirty percent. Really, uh, holding us back there, Alabama, but not surprising, expected. She had one vaccinated patient, just needed a little oxygen and is expected to fully recover. Some of the others are dying. "I'm admitting young, healthy people to the hospital with very serious COVID infections," wrote Kobe, a hospitalist at Grandview Medical Center in Birmingham in an emotional Facebook post Sunday. "One of the last things they do before they're intubated is beg me for the vaccine. I hold their hand and I tell them that I'm sorry, but it's too late." Maybe you should get it before it's too late. I don't know if I believe this, though. It is a Facebook post. Now, the reason why I don't believe it is because I just legitimately don't believe that anyone in Alabama who's never gotten a vaccine will recognize that the vaccine will save their lives in their last moment. Okay? I think they probably are like, I'm dying because of the, the China virus. The Chinese got me because I'm too much of a truth teller. They're working, they're collaborating with the demon rats through Hunter Biden, and then they fucking die. You know what I mean? Like, I just, I don't think that their, their dying breath before they get intubated and fucking die in a hospital alone and scared revolves around like, maybe I can salvage the situation with a COVID vaccine. I work in an ED and people actually, absolutely be straight dying and still shit on the vaccine? Yeah. But yeah, I'm sorry. I don't, I don't believe that these psychopathic chuds unironically in their dying breath have a come to Jesus moment where they're like, yeah, maybe Jesus shouldn't hold the wheel. Maybe we should let Pfizer, BioNTech hold the wheel. Maybe there are some people, though. If you're nearly dying, everything is possible. Three COVID-19 vaccines have been widely available in Alabama for months now, yet the state is the last in the nation in the vaccination rate with only thirty-three point seven percent of the population fully vaccinated. COVID-19 case numbers and hospitalizations are surging yet again due to the more contagious Delta variant of the virus and Alabama's low vaccination rate. The first year and a half of the pandemic, Kobe and hundreds of other Alabama physicians caring for the critically ill COVID-19 patients worked themselves to the bone trying to save as many as possible. Back in twenty twenty and early twenty twenty-one, when the vaccine wasn't available, it was just the tragedy after tragedy. Birmingham is, has a huge medical center and has UAB, an extremely well-respected college of medicine. Unfortunately, it's Alabama, so even a large amount of people in the medical community didn't want the vaccine, including my bro. Yeah, I know. That's like the dumbest fucking thing. If you're struggling so much that you can hardly inhale, you're probably willing to ask for anything to help it. There's a reason the state motto of Mississippi is thank God for Alabama. I thought it was the other way around. I thought Alabama's, uh, motto is the thank God for Mississippi. It doesn't matter. Cause both of them are gonna start saying thank God for Texas. Because for some weird reason, Texas is like, you know, we've been doing too well lately. Like, you know, we got a lot of people coming into the state. You know, people are, 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 our real estate market is like blossoming. It's of course, uh, creating a lot of homelessness as a consequence of that. So now they're like, you know, so Texas is now also trying to be as bad as Alabama and Mississippi. It's great, dude. Medical professionals being anti-vax, isn't that a moron, oxymoron? No, it's just moronic and, uh, you know, conservatives, dude, expected. Expected. Yeah, I remember this story. The South Dakota nurse saying that even people dying of COVID-19 still don't believe it's real. Like, a lot of these, like, super hyped, super hyped up, uh, you know, stories off of Facebook from like doctors and personal anecdotes and stuff are hyped for, you know, propaganda reasons. Not that there is anything wrong with like pro-vaccination propaganda. I am on board with that fully. But, uh, yeah, I, I believe this more than the other one, to be honest with you. I believe people who are dying of COVID-19 to not recognize that they're dying of COVID-19 more than, uh, the other way around where they're like, maybe I'll take the vaccine. And it's partially, uh, because of fucking assholes like this. Marjorie Taylor Greene and numerous other people. But, uh, let's talk about that. Let's segue into Marjorie Taylor Greene for a second, okay? Cause, uh, this is, this is not happening in a vacuum. It's happening. Tell me you've been vaccinated without telling me you've been vaccinated.
Aaron Navarro, CBS News. Uh, Whip Scully said that he got vaccinated citing this Delta variant that's going around and said he's confident that it's safe and effective. Two questions. Have you yourself gotten vaccinated and do you disagree with the Republican whip?
Well, your, your first question is a violation of my HIPAA rights. You see, with HIPAA rights, uh, we don't have to reveal our medical records and that also involves our vaccine records.
It's really awesome. First of all, I know people say that's not how HIPAA rights works. Yes. But it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. Like, she's, it is a private thing and she doesn't have to reveal it, okay? She doesn't have to reveal it, except she has been vaccinated and she doesn't wanna say. That's it, okay? Cause every congressperson got vaccinated. Every single congressperson got vaccinated.
Do you disagree with the Republican whip?
Well, your, your first question is a violation of my HIPAA rights.
Also, the irony of Marjorie Taylor Greene, AKA Marjorie Titan Greene. You will never unsee it. She does look like an attack on, uh, Titan Titan, okay? But the irony of this fucking psycho saying, uh, uh, you know, maybe don't take the vaccine while she's fucking cycling Anowar, Anavar and, and clenbuterol and all manner of different like, uh, you know, HGH and all manner of different steroids is not lost on me, okay? Like, you are literally fucking doing D-ball and, and then simultaneously being like, ah, I don't know. If you've ever cycled steroids, do not worry about what's in the fucking vaccine, dude. Which she doesn't. She does not.
You see, with HIPAA rights, uh, we don't have to reveal our medical records and that also-
I'm always shocked, though, at like how little Marjorie Taylor Greene knows. Like, it's so, it's so strange. Like, you're fucking, you're a congressperson, dude. How do you not understand like basic laws? Why do you think she does clen and Anavar? She's not even that big? Clen doesn't make you big. It just makes you shredded. She's not even that shredded. Here's some more Marjorie Taylor Greene. Why is this so quiet?
People in Georgia say, you know, there are children-
What the fuck is going on today with my videos? Why are they so fucking quiet?
Skinny people who have died of the coronavirus. Do you feel any responsibility?
Oh, my God. Oh, my God. Oh, my God. Hold on.
You know, there are children, skinny people who have died of the coronavirus. Do you feel any responsibility? To you, grab me up. Um, you know what?
I'm sorry, dude, but this is, come on. Come on, dude, really? I mean, what are you doing? What are you doing? I'm so right, dude. I am the most right about this. I, this is like, yes, I am one hundred percent body shaming Marjorie Taylor Greene. I am one hundred percent body shaming Marjorie Taylor Greene. This entire interview that she gave was insane. Absolutely insane. Oh, here, this is what we were, another, another fucking fire take from, uh, the Titan herself. Let's hear what she would do if she was in charge of the CCP. If she was in charge, what she would do to the CCP.
If I was in charge and I had my way, I would come down on China so hard. I would put tariffs back in place and they would be more strict than President Trump's because those tariffs work. I would kick out every single Chinese in this country that is loyal to the CCP.
What? Bro, what the fuck? Yo, she's crazy, dude. Yo, she's literally like, you know what the worst part about this is? Americans are so reactionary against fucking China that they literally, if this got more viral and people were like, this is like, she's advocating for internment camps and like, you know, uh, mass immigration, mass like forced migration of Chinese people. They'd be like, oh, she meant loyalty to the CCP, brother. And a bunch of liberals would probably also fucking, uh, not disagree with her either. Like, the discourse around China is so fucking psychotic in this country, it sucks.
And those are, if you've signed one-
I do not care who they are.
If you've signed one of those documents that says that you've got a report-
Back to China. I don't care how much money you have, how much land you own, how many businesses you own, how much money you've donated to colleges and universities. I don't care about who your kid is and how many, how many students you've sent to-
So Jack Ma, all these guys, all these people that are part of-
They are loyal to the CCP. They go back. They go back.
In thirty seconds, you also got Wall Street. Would you cut off, would you immediately make sure that you could not fund these? You could not raise money? You couldn't go to the capital markets? You couldn't lend money?
We should not be funding CCP companies. We should not. We should not be, we should stop doing business with an enemy that is trying to kill us and did kill us.
I mean, this is what happens when you let a fucking racist-ass, real estate developer-ass, CrossFit mom become a congressperson. Like, what were we expecting? America's so fucking stupid and this is the exact kinda idiot that represents the people perfectly. This is a more adequate representation of the Republican Party. A, uh, a, a incredibly profoundly wealthy real estate developer who is completely batshit fucking crazy and mega racist. This is a significantly better representation of the Republican Party than like any number of those dumbass op-ed writers that you, uh, see on MSNBC and CNN and the New York Times and like all these other like liberal outlets that try to normalize the Republican Party. That's what it is. This is what the Republican Party is. Okay? This is how they operate. This is what they believe. And it is not even remotely surprising. These people are so dumb. China is the manufacturing hub of the world. The US would shit itself if China would ever restrict their products from going to the United States. Yeah. Yeah, where, how are you gonna, you think we have a problem right now with, uh, microchips and shit? Guess what, dude? That's literally all of them are made in China and Taiwan. That's it. Oh, here is the, uh, original Reddit post of the father of, oh, this is, oh, Jesus. Oh, okay. This person survived the Stoneman Douglas school shooting and their dad is a, their dad literally thinks that the Stoneman Douglas shooting was a false flag psy-op. "I think my dad's gone fucking insane. He's gonna be way too far into trouble processing the last five months. He's always been very conservative, but now QAnon has consumed his life to the point where it's tearing our family apart along with my mental health. Back in January, we saw the video of Marjorie Taylor Greene harassing David Hogg, another student, about the shooting being a false flag operation. And while my dad was already into Q, he'd never gone down that particular rabbit hole and now he's convinced everything was a hoax and it breaks my fucking heart. He's done extensive research on body language and claims he could tell Nicholas Cruz is a radical commie actor who was paid to sacrifice his life in order to remove our guns. He's questioning why they released the interrogation footage if not to further deceive the sheep believing everything they see. He also says the trial will be rigged and the reason they're taking, they're talking about the death penalty is to prevent them from ever talking just in case." What's really fucked is that he knows I never wanna hear about him or see his face ever again. I've been very clear on that and I always leave the room and he starts talking about him. I keep telling him to please, please fucking stop. There's no reaction or empathy whatsoever. Even burgundy colored t-shirts make me uncomfortable. He used to be so understanding. He stopped wearing it around me. That person is completely gone and I miss him so fucking much. A real piece of work to be able to sit here and act like nothing ever happened if it wasn't a hoax. Shame on you for being a part of it and putting your family through it too. He'll say stuff like that straight to my face whenever he's drinking and I wonder if he'd still say it if he knew what it does to me. It's bringing back so much of my survivor's guilt and I fucking hate him for it. I worked on it. Jesus Christ, that's so sad. I worked on it for so long and now I once again feel like the biggest piece of shit for being able to have good days when there are parents still grieving. That's what QAnon does to a motherfucker, dude. Yo, people. I mean, this makes sense, though, and here's why. This is exactly, uh, this is something we've seen in cults over and over again. It's a pattern that repeats itself with people that like subscribe to a cult and the way that that cult operates. Oftentimes when they're met with the reality that the, uh, doomsday cults, for example, famously predict like incorrectly when the doomsday is gonna happen, a lot of people do end up leaving the cult, but the ones that stay behind actually double down on their conviction. It's, it's basically a way to, it's a way to cope with how devastating reality is for that person where he's like, alright, well, even this, even something that I and my family, my loved ones have been a, a, a part of, even that is actually fake and it's staged and QAnon is actually right. How do you help them? I think there is no, I, I'm gonna be honest with you. I don't think there's any way to help that person. I, I don't know. And if there is one, I don't know. Okay? Wait, what? Ashton Kutcher's take on CIA? The guy from Dude, Where's My Car is now a China expert?
They can only use-
Yeah, if you wanna hear fucking takes on, uh, you know, sex work or China, I, I always go to Ashton Kutcher.
Technology in public places in the house. So if they want to be on their iPad doing a learning game or whatever that might be, it's only in the living room. They don't get to take technology into their bedrooms, uh, or into any private space in the house.
Oh, you don't think Marjorie Taylor Greene is vaccinated? This is two months old, but she says, but it says forty-four point eight percent of House Republicans were vaccinated at the time. Wait, really? I thought they all got vaccinated. That's so strange.
And then, and then the question of whether or not they're gonna go on social media, I'll cross that bridge when I get there. My guess is social media is gonna be very different, uh, by that point in time.
How do you think it'll be different?
Well, I look at TikTok right now, um, which is probably the fastest growing social media platform. Um, and, uh, and I, I currently, I see a, a massive regulatory battle on the horizon for a company like TikTok, um, that is powered by ByteDance, which is one of the most powerful-
Oh, my God, I'm gonna lose my fucking mind. This shit is so annoying. It's just like impossible to fucking, it's just impossible to watch Twitter videos.
Engine in the world in China.
Yeah.
Um, and I think about if I'm China and I wanna create a problem in, uh, in, uh, in that area of the world, uh, specifically a naval problem in that area of the world, um, I, in the South China Sea, I would probably want to utilize TikTok in order to influence the minds of Americans in a anti-US propaganda, anti-Taiwanese propaganda, uh, effort, uh, in order to make any kind of war from the United States extraordinarily unpopular in order to defend the South, the South China Sea.
Yeah, there's all sorts of ways they can manipulate our media and what our people think. That's right.
And, and I think that most people, um, believe that there is, uh, media manipulation happening and misinformation campaigns happening, just not through their sources. And, and I think that that's wrong. And I think we're about to face a reckoning in that particular domain, um, that is gonna probably change what social media looks like in the future because it's, in my sense, as a, as a fervent American, is that it's, they can only-
Ashton Kutcher runs a software where people use computer software and coding to find sex trafficking victims. Thoughts? Ashton Kutcher has done some good work uh, with, uh, combating sex trafficking. uh with uh combating sex trafficking but for the most part as this is the case with like most uh anti-sex trafficking operations it's clouded completely by anti-sex work biases that literally end up uh that literally end up just targeting fucking uh uh just consensual adult sex workers and for those of you who don't know this is usually how it works it's just yeah I mean this is people are gonna throw up question marks all day every day which because it's just because like you probably never heard about this or sex workers don't actually get a lot of uh um coverage on issues like this but it is the truth a lot of the anti-sex work or an anti-sex a lot of the anti-sex slavery legislation is written in a way that purposefully is designed to target consenting adult sex workers okay Testa Fosta is the perfect example of this like eliminating for example websites that sex workers that are adults and consenting okay that are doing it on their own uh from being able to utilize resources that help them share information with one another like uh you know warning people that this is a client that you shouldn't take on because they're abusive or something like that under the guise of saving us from human traffic we're constantly taken off platforms in silence to have our sites taken down yeah most Americans are worried about other countries doing America okay um Ben and Jerry's has now decided they know more about Jerusalem than the Israelis if Ben and Jerry's wants to have a meltdown and boycott Israel Oklahoma is ready to respond Oklahoma has an anti-boycott of Israel law in place we should immediately block the sale of all Ben and Jerry's in the state and in any state operated facility to align with our law same Senator says Biden thinks free speech is dangerous Oklahoma's don't need the Biden thought police telling us how to think and feel there is nothing more patriotic to me and to all my fellow Americans than restricting the God-given freedom of speech laws okay the God-given liberties of freedom of speech the most important the most important constitutionally protected right that we have restricting that at the behest of a foreign nation ye ye folks nothing says I love America and I love free speech like basically limiting free speech like civil protest against uh the actions that a foreign state takes abandon those protesters at the behest of said state ye ye we can understand information without their help I'm more concerned with DC controlling speech than I am with people passing wrong information let people speak he says I love that he's like he's like we need to we need to boycott like Oklahoma Texas like all these fucking right wing states all have some of the most restrictive anti-BDS laws for those of you who don't know BDS is uh a movement that's tailored around uh the original BDS movement against apartheid South Africa against the state of Israel which is an apartheid state uh which dictates that uh certain people in an effort to do consumer side activism want to boycott divest and put uh sanctions on the state of Israel until they uh are no longer a settler colonial apartheid state and uh in easier terms I'll just describe it as such uh murder Palestinian regularly and steal their homes and their land so that's what BDS is about but in a lot of southern states where they love free speech which is the God-given right to say the N word as a what man uh they have some of the most restrictive anti-free speech laws that are that are just straight up unconstitutional like uh demanding that uh public school teachers in the state of Texas have to sign a piece of paper that says that they will never and have never protested against the state of Israel how fucking insane is that what an absolutely insane piece of legislation in the most in the most like free place on earth brother this free speech does not exist not real this guy loves invoking freedom of speech arguments when it comes to like dangerous misinformation that ends up killing people but he hates it when it's like protesting a violent settler colonial apartheid state how great is that it's almost as great as Oklahoma's uh uh Oklahoma's neighbor Texas banning the mention or barring teachers from talking about how the KKK was morally wrong that's a real thing that happened that's a real thing that happened this week folks can you believe it yes in the state of Texas I mean this hasn't passed through uh both the House and Senate in the state because the Texan uh Democrats have escaped the state exclusively so uh they can't reach quorum and pass legislation but um Texas no longer requires teachers to say that the KKK was morally wrong like they're like you can't you don't have to say it you don't want to say it you got hate Texas basically was like you got hate in your heart let it out you got hate in your heart let it out